Do they say anything about the gate entry? Personally, I think that's important, the outside doors and the gate entry and the Calumet Center.
Well, they're not listing here, Road, well, back up here, Road Department. Calumet Center. They got to do four-door panels, mall housing with power for lots. Going to have a remote management cloud service. Going to have readers for these doors, large mount strike, surface-mounted rim strikes, one twelve-hundred-pound maglock with brackets. They're going to have double-pull, single-gain push-to-exit button. They're going to have some tracking conduit, game boxes, fully-clear sheets. Going to have some razor cable. And then they charge me for labor for all of that. And at the front, they're going to have an interior-glazed door. We'll need the deadbolt switched out with a padded-by-door cut. All that is what they list for Calumet Center.
Steve, wouldn't it broaden up the last meeting that our landlord needed to put a control access on that?
The landlord said that you have to, according to your lease, you have to get approval from the landlord in order to do any alteration to the facility itself on the outside. So when I had the discussion with both, the director of facilities, Phil Miller, as well as the local Hank Stanley, they said that we cannot prevent entry to that gateway by other people that rent the facility. So if we put our lock on there, you know, how are they going to get into the courtyard when they rent out the courtyard? So they didn't say yes, they didn't say no, they just said it's your problem to figure out how you're going to monitor that twenty-four hours a day, let people in. And so that was the discussion I brought up at the last meeting. Can't restrict people to the courtyard. They offered to take the gate off completely.
So if we put security on it, we're going to be responsible for letting people in and out?
Right, whenever they want in and out of the courtyard. That's when Hank Stanley suggested that we take the gate completely off. And that was the last discussion I had with him. If you guys, I took the numbers, Roy, that you read off about service. If you've got a pencil, if both of you have a pencil, I'll give you the breakdown of what that is. When you're ready, Jim.
It looks like a couple of other details broken out in the HSA proposal. So as they are putting in thirty-two-zone conventional commercial fire alarm panel kit, commercial residential fire breaker, AC/DM radio, and red plastic enclosures, power right control panel, fire permit fees, alarm batteries, so it looks like there is fire and burglar in this proposal.
That's the HSA?
Yeah. Fifty-nine, they're showing burglar alarms, security panels, looks like they need cell phone. Quick scan of the Calumet, it looks like they're not doing anything with the alarm there.
They're not allowed to.
So they didn't break out the law like they're supposed to, right? Give you, it sounds like you don't have a law for one to compare the two together. And the HSA is half the price, less than half the price of the on-top. And there's a wrote down.
Yeah, they're not.
You're comparing apple to apple.
They're not breaking down the same.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't look like you're comparing apple to apple.
I tend to think that from all of some of these abbreviations, that there would be alarms in this. Well, without any route to explain this, whatever is not fundamentally clear.
Think there's security included in that at all?
I think so because of all the subscription fees they've got built into their quote.
Look, they didn't have a, for, for.
They've got some abbreviations, it kind of looks like maybe there's some sort of fire control, but I don't know if that's, I can't make that assumption.
But I guess I'm looking at the money, the money difference. Like, one's half, less than half the price of the other one. So there's something that seems not to be given in those quotes, you know, saying, "compare apples to apples." Unless we know exactly what they've got written there.
When does this document have to be, uh, approved? Our time.
You have CARES Act money that you wanted to spend on this project. It has to be installed by December thirtieth. Installed by December thirtieth.
Is that what you were asking me? The question, I thought the question was, how long does it be to get that done?
When do we have to approve it?
We have to have the money spent by thirty December. We have to have it out of our hands and paid to them by thirty December. Work has to be completed by thirty December. And paid for.
So should we try calling this guy real quick to clarify what the number adds up? Trustee man?
Are you ready?
All right. Should we see if we can get him on the phone and ask that question? Put him on speakerphone, this is where he needs to be.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system. Nine-three-seven-six-seven-three-two-two-zero-three is not available. At the tone, please record your message. When you finish recording, you may hang up or press one for more options. To leave a callback number, press five.
Hey Bryant, Rory Mann, trustee of Jefferson Township, and we are reading a proposal in a meeting that we're holding right now. Would like for you to call us if you can at nine-three-seven-eight-three-zero-eight-four-four-nine. And if you did call, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. We'll see if you're pleased.
Okay, we've opened the bids on these. Just point, let's set this discussion aside, see if we can get an answer on whether or not the cop systems proposal has fire and burglar alarm systems or if that's just access control. Next on the agenda, CARES Act resolution, it was tabled eleven-seventeen.
All right, trustees, you asked us to go back and look at the initial lists. And one of those list items was paying for the touchless system if you were to buy one in your packets, as long as the fiscal officer, you have a packet that says two thousand twenty CARES Act expenditures. And in that is, we went to legal counsel. And we've got each line item looked at and approved, except we got answered late this afternoon on one line item that I will address with you on the current list. They have been also fact-checked with OTA, the Ohio Township Association, and the federal government's list of FAQs. And the front cover sheet says the steps that we have to follow to be able to get these things ordered and whatnot. Page two, which is the second page, are some of the suggestions that the fire department, myself, and others have come up with as secondary items, that if we receive any future CARES Act funding, we've identified at least a list for you all as trustees to look at and consider as adding, you know, or additional purchases beyond what you approved. Page three is the actual list we bring forward to you. One of the items, the only item on this entire list that is not approved, and I have the paperwork here that shows it's not approved, is that the sixth item that, oh, one, two, three, four, five, I'm sorry, the fifth item down starts with the word Phoenix. Regular uniforms are not permitted to be purchased under the CARES Act. So that's a fifteen-thousand-dollar item that was budgeted to purchase uniforms for the fire department that separate from gear, that's not your fire gear, those are approved purchases. So this list in front of you is complete minus that fifteen thousand.
Steve, you look at this, that it's happening.
To the back of your packet.
In the back?
Yeah, it should be in the rear of your packet with the miscellaneous. And one of the, a couple of the change additions to this since the last meeting, we got word that you can buy first responder vehicles or police cruisers as well, because you may transport a COVID patient to the hospital or to a secondary site, or you might be transporting family that are exposed to a COVID patient. And they'll be transporting those people from an accident scene. So there are fire departments and police departments around the United States finding every, or brand-new, but on-the-lock Ford, Ford or Chevrolets that they can find. So we got a quote from eleven and four. As you know, the first vehicle that was ordered was wrecked by a battalion chief in total. So you're down to just one cheap vehicle at the present time that is new. You were planning in the budget for two thousand twenty-one to order a new one. If you do it through CARES Act, you'll have no loan, no interest paid, it'll be paid through CARES Act. The second item on the list that's been added is a generator for Station fifty-nine. They are permitting generators to be able to power up a, what would be a disaster center or a power outage situation that involves COVID, people can come there, get treatment for COVID, just like your generator that is here at sixty. That is approved as well. So both those prices are off of quotes that have been received. All the other items are the same except for the values. Let me point out from the last time to this one. Bill Bre construction, if you remember, it was a fifty-five-thousand-dollar quote, and that's over the fifty-thousand-dollar threshold. Bill Bre came back with a forty-eight-thousand-dollar bid. Also, I received a bid today from another contractor. You have these in your packet as well, to the rear. That bid came in from a CJ Construction Utilities Company for the same, what appears to be the same description that Bill Bre submitted, exact wording, at forty-seven-thousand-six-fifty-four. So you have two bids for remodeling the bathrooms at Station fifty, the shower units at Station fifty-nine. The cleaning with TCL cleaning service for both Station fifty-nine, Station sixty, and for the cleaning of Calumet. Those were lowered by the contractor to be able to fit into the budget. And so you'll see those figures at fifteen thousand and nine thousand. The only thing I draw attention to is the CARES Act does not allow for a three-year contract. That also is pointed out by legal. So you would have to change this document to one-year contract. So you can't have anything multiple years like we originally had been assuming by, you know, different trade journals. Outside of that, the virtual number, or if you decide to go Zoom tonight or whatever with your equipment, we went with the lowest bid on this program. It doesn't mean that you can't buy something different. It just means the money is not appropriated in this particular spreadsheet. And then if you notice the security one, we anticipated it from the bids that we received, we anticipated possibly that the bid would come in in the range of sixty-five thousand. Didn't know that for sure, but we had to give you guys something to look at tonight because the original bids were between eighty, ninety, and over a hundred thousand on the initial bid. When we went back and asked them to separate, it's understandable that if the security system's taken out of two of their proposals, their rate would have dropped below eighty or ninety thousand. So that number might have to be adjusted a little bit based on if you select a vendor for security tonight. But the biggest thing is we have to stay within that three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-dollar that's been given to the township to spend. If you want any of this to get done before December thirtieth and take advantage of the free money with no match from the federal government, you have to make a decision tonight because we're less than thirty days, or we're getting close to thirty days to December thirtieth. And the fiscal officer asks to have plenty of time to issue POs. We have to have time to sign contracts and order the equipment that you see before you. We have to have it shipped in, and we have to have it installed. Legal counsel, myself, called the federal government today and asked about what happens if not all the projects are finished. But they definitely have credibly started, and we transferred all the money to the contractors. And they said there are extenuating circumstances that are permitted to be. But we have to write those extenuating circumstances as though we got started late, various other excuses. And we have to just keep that on file, why a project did not get done by December twentieth, or December thirtieth, that it rolled into the new year. But you have to declare that, you know, you can't do your whole list and say, "Well, that rolled into the new year." They will come back and make you reimburse the federal government for all the purchases. But anything that's big, like remodel of the bathroom showers, they have to get started right away. And if not, then that can't be an extenuating circumstance because they'll all, you know, whoever delayed the process. One of the, a side note, just for your own thoughts. Somebody asked the question, "Why can't we pay off the new ambulances that were just refurbished?" And we cannot because those purchases were initiated before March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty.
When the remodeling of the showers, when it's been the same way?
No, because it wasn't, it wasn't budgeted for. There is nothing in the budget to do those things. So that's the second thing you have to go by, is was it budgeted before March twenty-seventh?
He started remodeling, he started remodeling early before the start of.
Four years ago, the fire chief tore out the bathrooms. But there was no budget set aside specifically for bathrooms in your budget in twenty nineteen or eighteen. So legal counsel says that that project still applies.
Did you get the, did you get the letter, where's the, where's the letter in his packet?
We talked to him today, Tracy, and we have it, we will get it.
If I don't have an explanation, I can't write a purchase order if I don't have explanation for the, everything has to be explained thoroughly or provided, sort of explanation from legal counsel before you can pay this stuff. So I can't be, you can't assign me to write a purchase order. Whoever asked for the money will have to write a purchase order with the explanation to give to me before I can pay for this stuff. That is, that's the requirement.
That's good.
This COVID money.
That's a very good, that's a very good requirement. So we'll be there. But the thing is, trustees, you have until December thirtieth or you've said goodbye to the money in the community settlement.
It's a shame that we would waste free money. And we could have this money, it doesn't even come out of the budget or the community's money. But it's a shame that we would waste this money and we could be using it for this thing. And this has been brought, this was brought up months ago, and we kept putting it off until now, at the last eleventh hour, and trying to spend this money. We didn't know how much months ago, but we knew this money was coming.
Okay, if I look at the way the agenda is structured, we've got spending decisions to make. But it looks like we need to pass the bulk resolution for all the CARES Act expenditures first.
Yes. But, but at the same time, you've got to have the number right on this security system or else this, what you're passing isn't accurate.
You've already, you already got the money, you already passed the resolution, you already encumbered the funds. Already, they're sitting there waiting for you guys now to decide what you want to, what you want to spend it on. And what you want at that point, then you provide all of them. When you decide, then you provide all the reasoning why that fits the CARES. So all you have to do right now, you've got the money waiting for you to spend. You just have to spend it under the requirements, the guidelines that are given to you. So you have to decide based on the information you have. You have to decide if it fits under those guidelines and choose those products. So the money is sitting there. You've already done that part. That's why we passed the resolution the last time, to encumber all the funds so we wouldn't lose it. November twentieth was the deadline for us to do that, and we did that. Now you have to turn your money back in.
All right, what blanks do we need to fill in on the appropriations list, Mr. Wolf?
All right, so all you have to do is approve the total expenditure of three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-ninety-point-four-three, which is listed on this detailed list. But you've got to keep in mind that you've got fifteen thousand that's being removed. But then your, your security quote hasn't been determined. But those two items are the only thing that hasn't been determined on this list. So if you say authorize three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-ninety-point-four-three, and you, and then put it into that line. And then put it down, down at the last, now therefore, then you're not spending all the three-twenty-two-oh-nine-six-point-seven-one, you're only spending three-twenty-one-three-ninety-point-four-three per the list. Then you authorize the township managers to go ahead and make purchase through the procedure that the fiscal officer's laid out for us to follow.
Fair question, on the, you said the crew's second set of uniforms has come off?
It's coming off, yes, we're not allowed to do that.
What about the chief's second?
Fire gear's approved.
That's okay.
Yeah, any kind of fire gear is completely approved, whether you buy two, three, or one set. The only thing not approved is the uniforms themselves, which is your clothing.
And the car is okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that also include any set of, set of, set of your clothes for the road department?
No, we have to move that expenditure, which originally was on this list, Tracy. I have to get with you and change that allocation to a regular road fund expenditure.
Is it already fixed, and was that just made to change?
Right, so I have to get with you, but, you know, we, obviously we have to do one step at a time.
Okay, I just want to make the note of.
Yep, so that's why that was the other.
Is that what they're black out of? Is that what they're black?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. See, I didn't have this original list, I didn't know.
Yeah, so what Tracy's talking about, trustees, is we had the road department buying a clean set of clothes as well because they're cleaning up trash with COVID in it, or could be COVID and they're exposed to it. The only thing allowed for clothing in the road department is buying what they call biop outfits, you know, like that, where they get in a, looks like a space sheet suit, and those were too expensive for this spreadsheet. Key note, the remodeled sixty-two shower bathrooms for eight thousand dollars, which is close to the bottom, your road department's going to do one-hundred percent of the labor. So this is strictly up to eight thousand dollars of supplies to be able to remodel these shower bathrooms, kitchen areas that, you know, need to be disinfected. And by remodeling, the CARES Act allows you to do that. We may not use the full eight thousand, and which then either spend it somewhere else or, like Tracy has said in previous meetings, we have to turn it back to the federal government. But we're trying to save as much money with our own people doing the work than, you know, having a major contractor doing a small job like that.
So this CARES last, the CARES Act list pretty much is. pretty much is going to follow a not to exceed
Correct.
three twenty-two, oh ninety-six, and this list is three twenty-one, three ninety. So we take the adjustments with who we, who we make.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, my, my word of caution here that I had not made here, not caution, but something to pay attention to, if you have those quotes for that swipe card system that's floating up and down, we may want to retain that eighteen, that fifteen thousand that uniform can't, we're not allowed to order, and see if we need any of that for the swipe card system, instead of making a reallocation of that fifteen thousand for other expenditures at this time. That would give you eighty.
All right.
But a, a vote of yes today allows your department managers to get this stuff rolling, because every other community around the United States is trying to order the same stuff, and Christmas time is here.
All right. Tracy, can I have some resolution numbers? What number we start with tonight?
Mr. Vice President, I make a motion that we, I need a number for for this resolution. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve the purchase of products, services, and supplies to prevent the exposure and spread of COVID-nineteen virus and the paritum.